Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of March 10th, 2022. Please join me in the flag, salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2022 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and also available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available through the Township Civic Clerk website, and complete applications are on file in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of board members and township professionals?
Mr. Scobal and Mr. Wagner, and Mr. Beeson, Senator Amara, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Chikarelli, Mr. Delkor, the mayor, the vice chair, and the chair.
Excellent. First up, we have a consideration of meeting minutes. We have a few this evening. First up is the meeting minutes of November 5th, 2020. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any comments from the dais? You ring down, roll call, please. Eligible members.
Mr. Beeson, Mr. Chikarelli, Mr. Delkor, the mayor, the vice chair, and the chair.
Go ahead, sorry.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sroger.
Yes. Next up is the, where am I at here? Yeah, because it's February 1st. I don't know why this is showing. My copy says July 1st.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm asking, is it July 1?
Yes.
Okay. So it's the executive session of July 1st, 2021. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Comments from the dais? Roll call, please. Should we, is everyone eligible? Actually, yes.
Mr. Beeson, everyone was eligible for the last round of minutes, and Mr. Hestag.
Excellent.
Except Nathan, and Sam, Maria is not.
Right. I mean, when I was on the board last year, so eligible.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes.
Chair Sroger.
Yes. And last is the meeting minutes of December 2nd, 2021. Eligible members? I believe everyone except myself.
And Mr. Scobal. And add Mr. Santa Maria.
No, he's off.
He's here.
He's here. Everybody here who's eligible, other than Ms. Smith and yourself.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beeson?
Yes.
Mr. Senator Amara?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Mr. Chikarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Julian?
Yes. Okay. We do not have any resolutions for consideration. Don't have any planning board business. So next will be business from the floor for matters that are not on this evening's agenda. So anyone from the public that would like to provide any comments to the board for items on this evening's agenda, and please state your name and address for the record. And we also have a five-minute rule or timer, sorry.
Tim Barocco, 3 Franklin Drive, Hillsborough. I have a question, I guess, from Mr. Bernstein. The, this is related to Toll Brothers, Rosebrook. They have four more approvals that they have to go through. I'm just wondering who those entities are. I think I know three. I don't necessarily know the fourth. So can someone just remind me who those four are?
I believe it's the Soil Conservation District, the County Planning Board, the Department of Environmental Protection.
DNR, right?
DNR.
Okay, all right, good. I had it right. Okay. And just another, oh, by the way, we've done some follow-up and learned that the monitoring well that was supposed to have been installed in 1994 was installed in October of 2021. For that whole period of time, obviously there was no testing being done as prescribed in the resolution from 1994. That also prescribed that they're supposed to do runoff testing at the two tributaries, and one goes through our neighborhood and the one goes down by the cemetery twice a year. That wasn't done ever until October. So I guess Toll Brothers got on the ball, but Rosebrook never was. And you got to scratch your head as a resident and say, how could that go on? That, you know, that could have had some real serious effects to our wells. And how could it go on that nobody pays attention to that? And I'll just let it rest. It's incomprehensible. But it gets worse because they also have special permits for septic and other things, the ponds and the stuff they put on the lawns. It's NJDE, NJ, I'm sorry, Department DEP permits for that. And it turns out, there's a way you can get on and look up violations. And every single year since the golf course has been there, there's been violations, VOC in the septic test water, coliform, and a bunch of other stuff. But every single year there's violations. And from talking to Mike Carr, he takes no responsibility for that. So there again, who in the township is looking out for us? And how does that even play into all of this stuff? Play into, you know, the Toll Brothers deal, you know, happening? Seems to me that when you sell a piece of property, I think there's a circle of law or something. I don't, I'm not expert in any of this, but you need to do remediation and stuff. So it seems like these kind of things are in play. I'm not sure, but some big issues. And on top of that, Toll Brothers wants to come in and put in all what they're doing and not do any water testing ongoing. Now, they're going to be stirring up, as we said last time, all this stuff that's on the lawns and all this other stuff that's been, the VOCs or whatever else has been going in from the septic system. Somebody's got to remember we got wells in our health and all of that at stake. And I don't know, somebody's got to look out for us. As I keep saying, we need an advocate. It can't be, there were some forgotten people. We're humans. We know, I think we deserve better than we're getting. We're going to follow this up to the best we can with other entities, maybe be more helpful than the township has been to us.
Okay.
Good evening, Chairman, board members, and mayor. Richard Onderko, the mayor of Manville, 325 North Main Street, Manville, New Jersey. Our borough hall is still decimated. I made the headlines today. I hope people saw the paper. It's good trouble. Good trouble for my town, good trouble for me, trying to keep the spotlight on, trying to have somebody help Manville. I was at the last meeting of this board when you voted unanimously unanimously to approve the golf course development project. And my question to the board, to you, Chairman, is about two years ago, I was at the meeting when you voted to change the zoning on that property to allow for residential. And my question is, was that court mandated under the affordable housing settlement that changes zoning?
Well, the township committee changes the zoning. We just advised on it here.
The answer to the question is yes, mayor. Which part of a settlement is part of the affordable housing case?
Okay. It's kind of ironic that, you know, you put in 174 luxury homes and it's tied somehow to affordable housing. And it was like a quid pro quo, in my opinion, where you get $5 million to continue to build somewhere, most likely on the border of Manville, to flood my town. These 174 homes that are going in aren't good for the environment and with the amount of stormwater runoff that's going to be produced, that's going to feed the Rosebrook and the Millstone River, and it ends up in Manville. So I have an option. I have a proposal for this board and the township committee. How about sending half the property tax revenue to Manville from these homes? I could sure use the money. We're hurting. Manville's drowning. Consider it. Be a good neighbor. And please, try to stop building on our border. It's really hurting us. I appreciate it.
My advice is, as I've given, the state is who has control of this issue. And our representatives have done nothing. But I think if you've made headlines and you're getting the publicity, I believe, you know, State Senator Zwicker, you know, would be more than happy to hear any vibes because, as I mentioned last week, he introduced legislation to make ultimate frisbee the state sport. So he obviously has a little time on his hands, and I would think he would, you know, want to take affordable housing remediation seriously because the issue that you're bringing up, it's all over the state. It's a main concern. And as you would be well aware, that unfortunately, affordable housing and fair share housing does not care about infrastructure in general. I mean, it's a myopic type of viewpoint that they have, and it's just about affordable housing, and that is it. So we hear you and go.
Like I say, just all due respect, Mayor Onderko, you don't have the affordable housing problem is because you're already at about 95% impervious. You know, when you built the big and center of town, that big parking lot with a bunch of cars on it, I don't think there was thought of best management practices there either. So I do understand and respect your need and your request, but let's be truthful that Manville, when it was built, was not considered any best management practice back in the day. And at 85, 90% impervious of your town as a whole, I think it's unfair to throw shots at Hillsborough for building on your border because we're building everywhere. We're building in the center of town, we're building on the south end of town, building on the north end of town, we're building everywhere. So before you start throwing stones, you know, you got to look inward too, okay?
I'm just trying to make you aware of it.
We're more than aware.
There's a bad situation.
Yeah, no kidding. No kidding. But.
No doubt, Mayor.
Mayor, we're here every day. If you have a discussion you'd like to have, there's ample opportunity.
Congratulations for making the paper.
You're sending me a pack.
That's the way to negotiate that.
Maria, January 6, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 3, 2155 Camp Lane Road. I think the comments by the mayor, by Mayor Lapani to Mayor Onderko were really a low blow. That's an old town. Whatever parking, whatever is impervious there right now has been there a very long time, where you guys are just building and building and building and causing more and more problems, where property owners from Green Hills, from Claremont are all coming and they're pleading with you because they have serious stormwater issues. And what's been done about those stormwater issues? You're going to say to the mayor, oh, look what you did. Well, what about what you did? What are you doing as far as stormwater? Now, the gentleman before said that there were certain things that needed to be dealt with that needed to be taken care of regarding the property, the golf course, and whatever, pesticides, fertilizer, whatever may be on there, that that should be, that that should have been checked every year. We have a health department. We have someone who's in charge of that health department who's making a lot of money. What is that person doing? Are there reports on what he's doing and what needs to be done? If there are certain things that were required, are those things done? So to tell somebody, oh, yeah, well, look what you did, what are you guys doing? The stormwater is such a serious thing. The flooding is getting worse and worse, and you come here. I was at the meeting last week for the Toll Brothers application. You extended it a half an hour, who knows what for, just to waste everyone's time because it was the same song and dance, just like it was at the end of the campus LLC Weiss application. Oh, our hands are tied. The court has tied our hands. We can't do anything. The Judge, Judge Thomas C. Miller is going to give us a bunch of whatever. And so it's the same song and dance, the same song and dance. You guys are saying you can't do anything when you have people coming here and saying their homes are flooded. At the last flood, they had to be rescued out of a second story. Someone's foundation collapsed, and you say, oh, we can't do anything. Well, if you can't do anything and you're so afraid, then maybe you should allow someone, you should step aside and allow someone else to take your place that's going to do something for the property owners and the taxpayers of Hillsborough. At that last meeting, after the half-hour extension of the meeting, and it was time to vote, Attorney Bernstein made an ominous, an ominous statement saying, remember the consequences if the board votes no to the application. So what are the consequences? That the judge is going to take away your Hillsboroughs of unity? Or what are the consequences? Because that was a very ominous statement. And Mayor Onderko asked if the zone change ordinance for Toll Brothers, was that approved by the, was that approved by, was that ordered by Judge Thomas C. Miller? Because he's, in the papers, it says the court, the court. It's not the court, it's the judge. Did Judge Thomas C. Miller order that and approve that? And did the fair share housing attorney or attorneys who were involved in that settlement, did they approve that? Because to put luxury homes on a golf course with no affordable housing, how is that helping the people who need affordable housing? So this whole thing is a joke, but the worst thing is when I hear the comments and then you waste our time because it's a done deal. When you say, oh, well, you know, we hear you and we're so sorry for you, but, but we have to vote yes, and everyone votes yes. It's a joke.
I plan for Tom O'Donnell, 33 N Street. I wasn't able to make last week's meeting. And I'm not going to be long. I don't want to do that, but I just want to be, follow up the last comments. I've read the affordable housing agreement. And in my opinion, based on what I read, it looked like the township committee and the township was, their hands were tied. It definitely said to you, you know, they just said, quote unquote, that the township would cooperate. But that same agreement also said that the agreement didn't govern this group, the planning board. My question is to Mr. Bernstein, is that a, is that a valid interpretation of the agreement that the planning board is not in that agreement?
No. Planning board is not a party to the agreement, but I don't agree with the statement that the planning board is not bound by the zoning nor by the agreement.
So it's not a party of the agreement and it's not bound by it?
No.
But I would have thought that as not being a party of the agreement.
They're not a party to the litigation. They weren't a party to the litigation. They are, however, bound by the zoning change that was put into place as part of the agreement.
So that's why the following sentence, I'm doing this from memory, so forgive me, following sentence is that it was expected that the planning board would approve the project as it was going to be submitted.
Correct.
Correct. So going back to the mayor's comment about the zoning change, essentially, this is, I don't know, a show? Your hands were tied. You have neighbors come up talking, crying about losing their basement and flooding concerns. Why do we have these public meetings if our comments and questions are moot? At the, at the planning board zone, the rezoning meeting, that, at the end of that, they said, yeah, you're right. This, this meeting is kind of moot. So again, all of the discussions we've had around this, at the end of the day, were moot because of that agreement, in my opinion.
So, Mr. Donald, the reason for the meetings is to put on record the testimony of the professionals, the testimony of the owner, the, all the exhibits which are bound by the, and for the record, any approvals that were, are comments made by the DEP or NJEP. So for the record of law, you have to have the hearing so it is not just a backroom deal of just plans. So the planning board meeting is to have in public all the exhibits, all the testimony, and all the proof of the burden by the engineers and the applicant that they are meeting what is by law they need to do. That is why you have the meeting.
But I also want to be clear, because the, and it was just kind of commented upon, the fact of the matter is, there is latitude as to what the board can do. While we're bound by the zone, and if the zone, if the project meets a zone, but the board can choose to vote as it, as we did in campus. But in some cases, the risk of those votes may outweigh what the overall program of affordable housing would be. And by that, I mean, I know some of our audience members don't want to hear it, and, you know, that's your prerogative. But the reality is, in the event that our immunity is stripped, that means that builders can come in and basically put their hand up and say, I can build affordable housing and do it wherever and however they want, and all local rule goes away. So you may think that's a pie in the sky or a, you know, a far-fetched. It is not. And we were told pretty clearly as to what the implication would be. And if you've looked at any of the litigation in this state around affordable housing, the Supreme Court and our legislators don't care. Affordable housing is all they want. They don't care about schools. They don't care about infrastructure. They don't care about roads. They don't care about sewers. And frankly, they don't care about flooding. So we have to figure out how to make that work. And I'm, so you can believe it, you can believe it's a sham. The board has the ability to vote as, but there are repercussions to that, and we have to live with that. And everyone has to live with that. To Mayor's point, we had a lot of objections. This board challenged us the prior meeting, okay? And said, okay, go do your homework, get your data, figure out what your problem, you know, what your challenges are. The environmental, the stormwater issues were shut down. I wasn't here for that, but I was told that it was going to be approved on the 23rd, and it somehow got approved last week. Then I went back with that agreement. Was that not dictated, that timeline dictated by the agreement? Because I think there was a timeline dictated in the agreement with the, with the affordable housing agreement. Is that correct? Okay. So we have the professionals.
Mr. O'Donnell, I don't know who's told you that the meeting was going to get put off for a week, but that was never any decision by this board.
No, no, no. The big prior meeting, they said that there was going to be a decision was going to be made on the 23rd.
No.
No.
It was.
It served the 23rd.
It would.
Yeah.
No. First of all, the board doesn't meet on the 23rd. The board meets on Thursday, the 23rd is a Wednesday. The board never agreed to meet on any other day. The application came before the board last week on the 3rd, and it was finished. The board voted.
So what is the timeline to contest the board's decision? Isn't it like a 40-day window? I just want to confirm that.
I'll let you go look it up.
He can't provide.
Yeah, you like to have us waste our time, don't you, Mr. Bernstein?
No, I don't, Mr. Don.
Yeah. We found the data that refuted their professional engineer, that so much so made us challenge and question their engineer's credibility. Were they properly stormwater certified? A lot of their statements, that person's statements, were inaccurate. I'll assume they were honest mistakes, but to have a project of this magnitude with the risk of Claremont so significant, and the number one issue to make mistakes on their calculations and their statements that affects how you decide your vote, I don't understand that. I don't understand why you don't take our objections to your point, Mayor. We're objecting to their credibility, their statements, false statements about stormwater, which is at the heart of the issue. And yet you just disregard the question and the objection.
I don't think we disregard anything. I don't think there's moot points. I think we do everything in our ability, even though it might not seem like it to you, and you might not get the answers that you like. But I mean, we work within the confines diligently of all the DEP regs, all the county regs. We spend hours and hours. No, no, I'm just, just listen to me, right? Because I've, you know, I've listened to this a lot myself. I've been serving on the board a long time, but I'm telling you, we do our due diligence here, okay? But we can't, you know, you say it's inaccurate. Well, the ultimate arbiter is going to be the NJDEP. But, you know, we basically went through the process that we have to stay within the confines of the regs. And we do hear what you're saying. And we just don't come up here willy-nilly and say, okay, you know, whatever you want, it's a done deal. That's not true. Because if it was a moot point, I wouldn't be here. I mean, I got, I have other things to do too. But, you know, it's just not fair to say what you're saying. Now, you might not like, you know, you might have a different perception or your calculations might be different than what our engineers are, but ultimately, they are going to be the calculations that get approved by all these agencies. And that's the way it is. I mean, we can't change the rainfall calculations from 20 years ago that the DEP uses right now. We just.
They're about to change.
Well, they are, but, you know, that's what we have to work with right now. If they change, then we'll use.
But they didn't make a statement that they were updated. They weren't. Like that piece was not.
Well, but the DEP, I mean, that's the DEP. That's not the, that's not the Hillsborough Environmental Commission. That's not the Hillsborough Planning Board. That's not what we do. And we have to work within the confines of regulations. Otherwise, you know, what standard do you want us to work by? You know, somebody brings up professors, this and that. I mean, I don't disagree with it, but I have to work within the confines of the law. I mean, it's just, it is what it is. And respectfully, sir, it's, you know, we're not up here. It's not a moot point. We take it seriously. Believe me. I spent hours going through this. And if I thought it was a willy-nilly or moot point, I wouldn't be here. You know, I'm a volunteer. I don't, I have no political aspirations. I'm here to serve the community. I mean, here the homeowners, you know, hearts go out to them, but this is, this is the state of affairs. You know, this is the way it works type of thing.
One of the major issues, and I'm sure it was addressed, was the test wells. There is a, there's an email chain, a letter chain between Mr. Bernstein and the landowner saying this is a major issue and could impact the ability to develop on the property. From what I read, it looked like there was going to be continuing conversation to that. We asked for, that was provided as part of our Oprah request, and I'm going to submit another Oprah request because we have no follow-up to that conversation. Like, it was a very interesting email thread to see, and I'm sure it didn't just end with that email. The other thing is, this property, Claremont, has been put at risk for 25 years by a different property owner. 25 years, they've been polluting, they've been fined for pollute, not fined, I'm sorry, correction. They have been identified as having violations with pollution. Yet we were never told as neighboring property owners, abating property owners, to have our wells tested. I'm assuming that information at some point came across the township's desk. Why wasn't the people of Claremont told? That's a big question that I have. And then when we originally, when Doug, Mr. Eden, originally asked about the test wells, he went to Anthony Ferreira's office, and he went to, I believe it was the Health Department, and he was told that his understanding of what was supposed to happen was wrong and that they had a different purpose. We've seen email threads where that was discussed internally within the township that basically was like, okay, like, oh, crap. No, they were supposed to be there. And they weren't for over 20 years, almost 25 years. We haven't had the wells in place that were mandated by, I believe, your predecessors on this board. What is the planning board going to do or what is the power of the township to make sure that this, I don't know what you want to call it, irresponsible landowner, crappy neighbor? neighbor, is held accountable? You know, they're going to fracture the ground, what's going to happen? I know you guys aren't experts, I'm not. We're working on getting experts to bring them in front of the township. We're working on going in front of the DEP. We're going to continue to, you know, challenge this. I understand that that's where it's got to happen, but it's super frustrating, and for me, as a, an abating homeowner, talking about my neighbors, Royce Brook, they've got a tent that causes noise pollution. I'd like to see a permit put back in place that was in place the first two years, that just was, I guess, grandfathered, that has a compliance to noise component in it, so that there's, this group as a, as a township, you've got some controls over that. So, we're just dealing with a really shitty neighbor, and we want to take care of that. That's it. Thank you. Here.
Andrew Stewart, 35 Berniston Court, Hillsborough. With all the building, I'm curious of any plans for infrastructure, like police, fire, especially schools. I have two kids in the school system, one in middle school, and the hallways are so crowded, and she's like, "They're soldiers," so they're just squished. There are some rooms, they don't have enough seats for students. I know some parents have complained, stunning me, there's no room for kindergartners, they have to go to Triangle, and then later on be transferred back to Tri, back to Triangle, which is disruptive for an elementary school. They, they have to set their friends, they, they're used to that school, and suddenly they're uprooted to a different school. I'm just wondering, you know, Hillsborough is one of the best places to live in America, but are we going to continue with the building, the warehouses being proposed, trucks? What about our roads? What about the police? What about adding, you know, all that? And the flooding? People are going to see Hillsborough flooding like Bound Brook, and like poor Mandville, and suddenly, no one's going to live here.
Well, to answer your first question, the Board of Ed handles the schools, we have no jurisdiction of that, so, now...
But...
But, as far as police, increased police, we increase police as population goes up, okay? That's, in fact, we're interviewing police today, as a matter of fact. Fire is a, we're still a volunteer fire department, so we're, we're under the guise of volunteers, unless we want to start down the path of paid volunteers, our paid fire department. But to, has been brought up by the, by people prior, they don't care about the infrastructure, it's up to us to figure out how to, how to work around it as best we can.
All right.
Okay?
So, I know Amsterdam was built by Country Classics, or given money and funds to build Country Classics. Is Toll Brothers going to do something similar? I mean, our schools are crowded, I mean, these people are going to move into this neighborhood, they're going to, you know, we pay taxes, we pay decent taxes for decent schools. It's a question.
So, I'll give you the honest answer, it's going to depend on the taxpayers, because they're going to have to vote to whether or not they want another school. Fact of the matter, that's, that's what it's going to come down to, because the Board of Ed can't build another school without, without it going to referendum. So, if you'd like one, I would, I would suggest you rally up your friends, and when it comes up on, for a vote, you make sure you, you, you vote accordingly.
We have nothing to do, as much as we may want. We have, we work with them on planning, but we, we can't drive that process for, for the school system, completely separate organization.
Some, some, is it some taxpayer, I mean, some of the money that you guys get, isn't there...
Well, the, the, the property taxes that are raised are, cover both budgets, yes, but, but we have no say in the decision process as a governing body.
And as, you know, we mentioned last week, because that whole thing came up about contribution of developers, that has to be voluntary. The days when you could ask, or strongly imply for a certain vote, long gone for those very reasons, because there was a quid pro quo game that went on. So it's got to actually be up to, I'm going to say, the goodness of a developer coming into town, if they want to, you know, make a proper donation.
Yes, I just don't know where the kids are going to go. Simple as that.
Yeah, they'll figure a way, because I know, it wasn't, well, it was a while ago, where we had trailers around the middle school.
Yeah, and the middle school, I mean, that flooded too, and we had delayed school because of flooding, and I mean, that's another thing to consider with all the building. I mean, we're, we have a previous space, and I'm sure, you know, the township does too, so, things to consider, and pretty soon, if we keep building, there won't be room for another school, or two, because there's not much room left in the elementary schools. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Eden, 55 Ann Street. In the court's decision that was handed down, it actually said that Toll Brothers, that Hillsborough Township, nobody could actually add to the cost, if I'm not mistaken, to the project. It was actually in the decision saying that we can't, you can't ask for, you can't ask for money, there, they don't have to give any additional cost. So even though we have problems in our area, stormwater, we need, our pond's dredged, we need a bigger cul pipe, a, a bigger stormwater pipe going under Millstone River Road, they're going to add water, we're going to have more water, they don't have to fix any of that. So that was already handed down by the courts for whatever, whatever reason, I don't know. But I want to just follow up on some of the things that Tom just mentioned, and since I was here last, I found we had VOC violations by Royce Brook Golf. We were never given the opportunity, which I asked for, to ask some questions to Royce Brook. You know, we only had Toll Brothers here, which weren't even, they're not even the property owner, but we had nine VOC violations between 2000 and 2009. Well, now I find, come to find, that they've been in violation every single year from 2000 till now. I mean, there were two years, I think 2011, 2019, it didn't cite a VOC, but if you looked at the, the year following that, it was in that, it was there, there were VOC. I was talking about acetone, benzene, where it was getting into their, into their sanitary sewer system, and this, these were, the DEP were doing these tests, which they do every year, and they're finding all these violations. On every single one of the tests, it said, it showed that Royce Brook had a permit, but the permit was only until 2009, and every single one, it said pending. I didn't understand that. So I don't know if the DEP wasn't renewing their permit, but these are questions that I don't have anybody here to ask. You can't answer it, how do you know? Maybe you should, I don't know. Because the follow-up with that, that's, makes me even more concerned. Back in 2019, when I started my comments and asked, I was asking Anthony Ferrera, you know, give me the results for the wet, the wells that were supposed to be put in place to protect our well water, our drinking water. For 200 homes that are just in our area, probably more throughout the community, and come to find out, it was in a planning board resolution 1994, they're responsible to do that. The property owner never did it. They never did it. I see correspondence from different people, I have letters here, that since I bought it, bought it up, and I started calling, "Hey, the property owners, the neighbors are starting to ask questions, we need to do something." But nobody ever got back to me. I was told that I was mistaken, the wells weren't supposed to be for that, they were supposed to be for quantity, not quality. I was right, it was supposed to be for quality. They never did it. So what are we going to do now? Are we going to have wells tested? Are you going to come back? I have a paper here, 19 homes on Ann Street were tested in 1996, and I want to see results, I want them retested, and I want them tested, I want them, I want them tested for 177 constituents, instead of just the seven that they tested for. Because, again, every single year, 25 years, what they're dumping, that, that's just what we know, because that's only the wells that they tested in their sanitary sewer system. What else would they doing back, are they doing back there? And then everybody looks at me cross-eyed when I say, "Hey, I'm concerned about the fracture in the shale," and then this stuff getting down into our, in our groundwater. What are we going to do about it? Does anybody care? It's, it's, it's a health, it's a health risk. It's, they wouldn't have put that in that resolution in 1994 if people weren't concerned about it back then, but everybody dropped the ball, and here we are, we're stuck. We're stuck. So, is this something that we need to follow up on? Somebody?
Well, I can't change what happened in the past, Doug. I can, that's done, right? So, moving forward, we have to make, we will look sure, make sure that the wells that are supposed to be there will be there, and the testing that needs to be done will done, be done. So I can tell you, I can't fix what happened 20 years ago. That's, that ship sailed, so, moving forward, we have to make sure that any wells that need to be put in and monitored will be done. And, and the, if there is a violation that, that DEP imposed upon Royce Brook, you know, it would have to be, be come to us, I don't think, but they would have to make sure they pay it, or they would get fined, you know?
And we, we did, in the agreement, in, in the approval, require that whatever was to have been done, either Royce Brook or the, or the applicant would have to, would have to ensure. Now, I know that, to the Mayor's point, that doesn't, that doesn't take care of what should have happened, but it was part of the agreement that they will have to ensure that. And if DEP was testing at least the sanitary sewer, they would have a, a record of what they were, the traces that they were finding of whatever, chemical elements, and I, I think you could be relatively sure that if they were significant traces, that they would have required additional work to be done. But, but, you can say what you want about the DEP, they, they, you know, they may not be the most efficient group, but they, they certainly take their contamination seriously. So, if, if there was, and we're going to, we're going to continue to track that, that's, that's part of the agreement going forward, that now we have to ensure that, that testing is being done.
I mean, it's the sanitary sewer, they're both not good, I mean, you know, if, if you trigger something, but if it's sanitary sewer, you might not have the same issue with wells, because it's two different systems, so, I mean, you should, you could test for both, but if I had to choose one or the other, you know, it means that they're putting something into the drains, and it's going kind of out the sanitary sewer system, might not be the same situation with your wells. I mean, I don't know, I'm just talking from experience.
But we only found that they were in the sanitary sewer because they were tested.
Right.
We have no idea what's in the groundwater, because they, they dropped the ball, nobody, they weren't tested.
I understand.
And, you know...
I'm just saying.
I, I feel we need, you know, it's a $600 test to have that extensive test done.
Right.
I mean, nobody came back to me and said, "When you found out that the wells were supposed to be tested, hey Doug, guess what? You were right. Send me an email." I talked to Mr. Spano, Mr. Ferrera, they left me hanging that I was wrong, I was mistaken. I knew I wasn't. But, you know, now everybody's going to say, "Oh, go pay 600 bucks and get your well tested." If you, if you really care about your, your family and your, and your health, I think that would be the smart thing to do, but it's on you, because there's nothing we can do about what happened in the past. That just doesn't work. It don't work. I think more needs to be done. I think we're owed that, at least. There's a, this property owner that we're not, we don't have an opportunity to talk to, Mr. Miani, I would love to have him sitting here tonight, and I asked him if we could have that happen, but you guys had a timeframe, you had a vote on that last meeting. How do you get, how does this property owner, Doug Eden has a piece of property, and I'm dumping chemicals on my property for 25 years, I come in front of anybody here and I ask, "Hey, I, can I have a special privilege? I need a permit, I want to do, I want to do something." You know what you're going to tell me? "Hey Doug, remediate, we're going to have to remediate your property, we're going to have to clean it up, because we have proof 25 years of you putting pollutants into the, into the ground." How does this property owner get away with getting a privilege, which, which I consider a privilege, of permits, even to Toll Brothers, even now? These permits, they should be denied. How did the DEP come and say, "Hey, we're going to approve these permits"? They have to go to the DEP for permits, am I right? They have to go to the, the, what is it, the Millstone Raritan, what, I'm not sure what the, what it is, they have to go and ask for permits.
Yep.
They've been polluting, they've been, how do you know what's, what, they've been, they've been doing this for, how do they, how do they get a privilege? You know, my kid, just let me finish, I'll tell you what, right now, it's a privilege, it's a permit is a privilege, and you have, you know what, for a property owner like, like Royce Brook Golf, from what I've, what I've seen, and what I've, what I've found, I think a lot more needs to be taken into consideration before they approve anything going any, any further on this project. And I actually, and I'm just going to read this one more time, because... This is a letter from, from Michael Carr, Director of Environmental Programs, Hillsborough Township Health Department. The letter's to Mr. Miani, he's the, from what I understand, the Royce Brook Golf, Vice President of Royce Brook Golf, Billy Casper, he's the property owner. I'm not going to read you the whole letter, it's lengthy, but it basically, it, it sums up, it says, "Please provide written documentation that you have taken all necessary steps in order to fulfill compliant with the prior planning board's resolution for this property within 30 calendar days of this letter. Failure to meet these requirements set forth in this resolution, this correspondence could result in legal action and/or, and/or negatively impact future plans for this property." This was written by Michael Carr, Mr. Miani, in, on February 10th, 2021, so it's current. So, with that, he cites, "Now, as of this date of this letter, Royce Brook Golf has failed to produce any additional documentation indicating that the requirements of this resolution are being met, including but not limited to, no best management practices for the use of chemicals on the premises have been made available. No results of annual testing from monitoring, monitoring, monitoring wells that was required to be installed near the impact to the residential potable wells by chemicals, pesticides, fungicides, fertilizers, and herbicides used by Royce Brook Golf. No results from any semi-annual testing of surface water as it is, as it exits the property and indicates any impact to the neighboring surface waters." Do you know if any of these things were met? Does anybody here know if Royce Brook met any of these things from, from Mr. Carr?
I don't.
You don't?
And, and I think we kind of went through, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I mean, we do have a five-minute limit on comments, and I know this is ongoing dispute, but, you know, what we heard...
I got to live with it for the rest of my life, so I got five minutes to try to, you know, and I think, again, I think, you know, we need, in my opinion, before this property owner gets any permits, or is given anything going forward for, toward this property, because Toll Brothers don't care. They don't care.
But Toll Brothers is the applicant, I mean, I, and we hear you and understand the current owner, you know, has not been a good neighbor, but I think that's beyond the jurisdiction of this board, unfortunately, because we only had to hear from the applicant itself, Toll Brothers, not from the property owner, but there were points raised, and I don't think they went, you know, by deaf ears, I, I mean, I say, you know, Mr. Maskey's shaking his head, I mean, obviously the mayor and community and Delkor, I mean, it's, it's going to be a continuing...
We're going to be impacted by this for as long as we live in our, in our homes downstream from that project. I, I'm blown away that it's even gotten this far, because that property has always been a sensitive property. I know it's being mandated, I know it's... I know it's a legal leader, but you know something? Sometimes somebody got to stand up legally or not. It's wrong. It's wrong. And the judge can just say, hey, this is, you know, the law says they can, we have to put in low-income housing and you guys are beeping. That's the way it is, but not at my expense and for, and 200 or more homes that are, that live, my neighbors. You guys really need to take more of this into consideration when it goes through the permit process because the DEP aren't getting back to us for whatever reason, I don't know. The watershed people haven't gotten back to us. We reached out to other entities. Nobody's getting back to us, which is telling me that it's a red flag. Nobody wants to touch this. There's a reason why because I think everybody knows it's wrong and we're getting it stuck down our throat.
I just want, Tim Barakow, three frankly, I just want to say one thing. It's very troubling. You guys, I've heard you say it a couple of times, what's not in your jurisdiction? We're telling you all these problems and we're hearing, I don't know whose jurisdiction that's in either because it's not being intended to. So what are we to think? Does anybody have any accountability?
And seeing no additional comments, going to move to, we don't have any considerations or notices. So we will now get to this evening's public hearing. Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC. The file number is 21-PV-09-MSPV. This is a application that's continued from our February 10th, 2022 meeting without further notice. Mr. Bernstein, should we describe the project again?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of items. One, Mr. Ciccarelli is recused from this application. Has been recused and continues to be recused. And we have the signature of Mr. Santa Marita, who has indicated that he has removed the last set of planning board video recording, which makes him eligible to participate in tonight's meeting.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mike O'Grady and the attorney for Harvard Way, JMJ4 LLC. It's a project that has no school-aged children, is not at all related to COA, no known environmental issues, and seeks to substantially expand the stormwater detention basin that's already existing on the lot. This is an application for preliminary and final major site plan approval for the construction of a 107,366-foot square house at the southern end of Harvard Way, Block 58, 1.09, on a vacant 9.1 acre parcel. Subject property is located in the long existing industrial free zone. This proposed use is permitted. It's a permitted principal use in the zone. As we indicated in the prior hearings, this property was preliminarily approved in 1988, June 9th, 1988, resolution memorialized the granting of the final major subdivision approval for the industrial uses. Several industrial buildings were constructed. There's a plastic manufacturer laboratory. And as our planner notified the board and testified at the November hearing, this has been zoned industrial for decades. Industrial building has been approved since the late 1980s. One thing I wanted to emphasize is that Mr. Ford indicated that the I-2 zone permits impervious coverage is 60%. Being sensitive to the environmental constraints, this application only proposes a 45.5% impervious coverage. There's only three bulk variances, two of which were created by virtue of requests by the township's professionals. Fire marshal wanted emergency access around the perimeter of the building, so the applicant agreed to provide a grass area that would be able to support a fire truck in the event of an emergency or brush fire. The other variances for tree removal were 6.02% over. We were compliant in the original submission, but the environmental commission at their first hearing asked that we really take a look at the detention basin that has fallen into quite substantial disrepair. We've met dozens of times with our professionals, multiple engineers, and at the last hearing, we expanded the capacity of that basin substantially, turned it from a dry basin into a wet basin. And again, that is the reason that we're going over the tree removal. The other variance is 35 feet is allowable, but we're asking for a 38.4, which is a C-bolt variance. Back in the November hearing, November 18, we heard from Greg Reddington on behalf of the owner, the applicant. We had our testimony from John McDonough and our traffic engineer, Betsy Dolan. At the January 13 hearing, we introduced our testimony from our registered architect, Roberto Martinez, and we concluded our testimony with Mike Ford, our civil engineer, who focused on the concerns raised both by the environmental commission and members of the public related to stormwater management and stormwater regulations. Counsel, then the opposition, Mr. Ashland, conducted a cross-examination for approximately one hour. So we don't have any affirmative testimony to give. Certainly, Mike Ford can answer any questions. We're hopeful that we can conclude the cross-examination of Mr. Ford and any opposition testimony tonight. And I guess we should swear, Mr. Ford, to continue the cross-examination.
Sure.
I think you remain under oath.
Yes.
And nothing's changed with your credentials since last time?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Ash, would you place your appearance on the record, please?
Yes, sir. I'm Jordan Ash with Ash Legal in Westwood, New Jersey. I represent the Green Hillas Community Organization, who is appearing in opposition to this first development. And if I could just get right into continuing the cross-examination. Is that better?
Just got to speak as close as you can to the mic because it's a, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Ford, I'm going to try to be as efficient as I can tonight. I also, I appreciate everybody's here volunteer, wants to get home. I also, when you get home, I know I'm a two-week-old son, I'd love to get home.
Congratulations.
Thank you. So, Mr. Ford, if we could just pick up where we left off. I believe we had an exhibit in front of you that was marked as O3, which was Appendix K to your report. You mind pulling that in front of you right now?
I don't hold the exhibits.
Mr. O'Grady, did you have a copy of that exhibit?
No, I don't have that copy.
O3. Thank you, Mr. Maskey. Okay, Mr. Ford, if you could just turn me to the second sheet of that exhibit. Do we see in the top-left corner where it says, Area A post-developed?
Yes.
Okay, and it says total area. What's the acreage there?
This is a reduced copy. It looks like it's 10.99.
Okay, and then just below that, it says impervious areas. What's the acreage is there?
Looks like 6.67.
I believe for the record, it's 6.87?
87. This is a reduced copy.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to make sure the record's clear. So my math from that tells me that that creates an impervious coverage of just over 62.5%, which is above the 60% limit. Is that correct?
I'm not disputing your math, sir. The impervious coverage limit that Mr. O'Grady referenced is for the site. That's what the zone refers to.
So what's this showing us, sir?
This is for the studied area of the drainage. Includes the off-site.
So Area A includes exactly what, sir?
Area A is including the subject site as well as the existing building on Lot 1.08. And as I said, I think in my prior testimony, as part of our analysis for implementing the required reductions, we elected to be conservative and treat the off-site existing industrial building that's already constructed as if it weren't there and analyze that drainage area in the proposed condition and apply the reductions required for that, just like we would only really be required to for the onsite. So that, to answer your question, it's the area that we're applying the reductions to.
Okay.
You're not required to apply the reductions to areas that you don't disturb or off your site.
But you would then agree with me that the previously approved development, which includes the full of Area A, is a combined impervious coverage that's above the 60% limit? Is that correct?
Well, it includes the roads as well. And the zoning doesn't apply to the roads. Roads have higher impervious coverage than them by default.
Okay, let's move on. Let's talk about your, the pond constructed wetland that you proposed to meet the green infrastructure requirement under the rules, sir. You're proposing that pond constructed wetlands meet the green infrastructure requirements to achieve the peak flow standard. Is that correct?
That's what the basin's intended for.
Okay. So per BMP 10.4, which is the BMP chapter that tells us what a pond constructed wetland is, it says that this is allowable only when it's designed as an online system. Help me to understand, sir. What is an online system in this context?
Don't know what you're referring to with the online, but it's within the drainage area. That's actually in the drainage area, the existing basin's within the study drainage area and part of that 10.99 acres you just referred to. Drainage area A.
So what I'm just trying to-
And everything flows through the basin, sir?
I appreciate that.
So that would not be offline? I'm sorry.
What I'm just trying to ask is, it's in BMP 10.4, I'm reading directly from it now, it says that using the standard constructed wetland for this type of green infrastructure is allowable when designed to receive runoff from all storm events as an online system. I'm just trying to understand what that means. Can you help me?
Online would be that it drains through that basin.
Okay. And another one of those requirements under BMP 10.4 is that the minimum drainage area to a pond constructed wetland is 25 acres. Is that correct?
Yes, but if you go onto the regs, it says that areas less than that are permitted as long as you do a water budget. In this case, we did do a water budget analysis on a monthly basis. At the last hearing, I think it was discussed that that be expanded to analyze it for a daily basis and for three different years of wet, dry, and average year. And this was also discussed at the environmental commission meeting on February 28th. And the applicant agreed to do that, expand the analysis.
So that expanded analysis, which is required under BMP 10.4, which uses a daily standard of wet year, dry year, and an average year, that's not been done yet, is that correct?
That's not, not been submitted to the board, no.
Okay, has it been submitted to the DEP yet?
No.
Has it been conducted yet?
We have done a preliminary analysis, yes. That's-
Can I just read for the environmental commission report to get it on the record?
Sure.
So it says Dr. Bruck stated that the water budget for the basin/construted wetlands requires year averages for three years, i.e. wet year, dry year, and average year. However, the current water budget provided by the applicant does not include this information. The information is required to be provided in the water budget to approve the constructed stormwater wetland design.
And we shall comply.
Okay, but that wasn't done when this was initially proposed, correct?
No.
Despite that, it's a very clear requirement under BMP 10.4?
That's correct.
Counselor, you got to talk into the mic because some of the people can't hear.
Sure. Moving on again, sir, you're aware of the flood-prone areas at and around the site and the concerns of the adjacent neighborhood downstream of the project. Is that correct?
Yes.
Despite this, you did not conduct any analysis of the impacts of your site and the stormwater management measures on those surrounding areas. Is that correct?
We've done analysis in accordance with the regulations and as I stated at, I think, the prior hearing, it's our understanding that the township has engaged the municipal engineer to do a more regional analysis to look for ways to address the existing drainage issues in that area and the flooding, sir.
Okay, but you've done that analysis for this-
No, I haven't done that, no.
Okay, and you also did not account for the combined peak flow of this site together with the whole of the drainage area. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you refer to with the whole peak or the whole of the drainage area. Certainly, we drain eventually into the Raritan River. I have been done an analysis of all the water in the Raritan River. We've done an analysis for our disturbed drain garies as required by code.
Okay, can you explain to me and the board the difference between peak flow rate control and runoff volume, please?
Yes, the state regulations, NJAC 7 semicolon 8, lay out the stormwater management standards. In those standards, they deal with quantity, which I think the counselor is referring to, quantity control. And the methodology for addressing the standards for quantity control include an option, which is normally the option with development, that is to take the pre-developed flows for the design storms, the 2, 10, and 100-year storm, and reduce those peaks by a specific amount, 50% for the 2-year, 75% for the 10, and 80% for the 100. As I stated in my prior hearing testimony, we lowered those peak flows substantially below what's required. With regard to volume, once you meet that standard for the peak flow reductions, there are no additional requirements that you reduce volume. By virtue of adding impervious coverage to a site, you're going to increase volume. I have done drainage analyses where we've reduced volume, but that's in cases where we've taken, say, a completely cultivated field where runoff from farm field is pretty high because it's substantially bare ground and converted it to another land use with not substantial impervious coverage and a substantial amount of lawn or tree areas. And by changing that land cover, you actually would reduce the volume runoff. But in this case, that's not a requirement and we haven't done that. I hope that addresses your request to explain that.
I appreciate that. So you would agree with me that it is, you can, as you suggest that you do in this case, meet the peak flow compliance requirement but still cause greater volume runoff from the site? Is that correct?
It's in our report. The numbers are there. That's correct. And that's permitted by the code.
Okay, so at the February 28th Environmental Commission meeting, and I wasn't there, but I'm getting this from the memo, it said that your colleague, Mr. Thomas Decker, agreed that the proposed design does not hold stormwater for an extended period, thereby releasing more water downstream very quickly after a storm. Do you agree with that, sir?
I wasn't at the hearing. I can't comment on the context of what that comment is about.
I'm asking if you agree with that comment.
I don't know how to decipher it, sir.
Can I just, for the record, like, say what the comment was?
I would appreciate that.
Okay, because it's not exactly what you said. Said, Mr. Decker agreed as such. Dr. Bruck stated that the proposed basin design affects the long-term but not the short-term conditions, so flooding is still at risk. The neighbors and a more detailed regional stormwater management should be completed. But he does agree that they do comply with the reduce peak flows for the 29, 37, 55, and 2 and 10-year, 100-year storm.
So I appreciate that. That's exactly right. My question to you, Mr. Ford, sir, is despite having complied as per your numbers with the peak flow rate requirements, is it not possible that this project could still cause flooding?
That really would be the subject of a regional analysis of what the town engineer's doing. So I don't know the answer to that because I- doing, so I, I don't know the answer to that because I haven't done-
You haven't done that analysis, correct? I'm sorry to point at you.
That's okay. No, I haven't done the analysis, yeah.
Let's, let's talk about the runoff volume calculations that are in your report. I don't think we need to mark them as exhibits right now to save time, but if you could turn with me in your report, if you have it, to your appendixes C and D, please.
What's the date of the report you're referring to?
Your most recently revised report, sir.
What's that date?
I believe it is January 26, 2022?
Yes.
Are you, are you with me? I'm at, uh-
B?
Appendix C, please. Right there, perfect. So, um, appendix C, sir, is your predeveloped hydrographs. I'm just reading that from the report, sir. If you go to page one of 25 in appendix C, you'll see about three-quarters of the way down the page. And I, at the top of the page, it's telling us it's the predeveloped hydrograph. You see that, sir?
Uh, yes.
Okay, if you go about three-quarters down the page, it shows us runoff volume, do you see that?
I'm not sure, I'm looking at the same page you are, yes.
Okay, and it says 0.812 acres feet, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, about how many acres feet is a cubic foot?
That's 650, I believe.
Okay. So-
We have it in cubic feet, too.
You did preview in your previous iteration of your report, I believe, right?
Well, no, there, if you go to appendix A, there's a summary of all these numbers.
Okay, great. So- So it's 0.812 predevelopment. If you'll turn with me now to the beginning of appendix D. There you are, you started page 1040. What we're looking at now is, at the top, it says label Area A impervious post-developed, you see that, sir?
Yes.
All right, and then if you go down to that same spot on the page, it says runoff volume 1.756 acres feet?
Yes.
Okay, and then if you also turn to page 16 of 40?
I'm there.
I'm getting there. There's another part of Area A, this is pervious post-development.
0.379 acres feet.
There you go, so if you add up 1.756 and 0.379, what I get is 2.135 acres feet. You just disagree with that?
No, and, and we're not disputing that the volumes increased from pre-posted, actually in the report.
I appreciate that, I'm just putting on the record to what you said.
Okay.
So this is an increase of about 1.323 acres feet, do you agree with that?
I'm not going to dispute your math, sir.
All right, and that's about 62% increase, or about 2.6 fold. So is it your testimony that despite not having conducted any sort of downstream analysis, that by increasing the volume runoff for the two-year storm by this amount, that this project will somehow not exacerbate the flooding conditions for neighboring residents and properties?
Sir, I'm saying that we've complied with the regulations and that type of analysis is not required.
Okay, is it also your testimony that despite having not conducted any sort of downstream analysis, that the combined peak flow of the site within the larger drainage area will somehow not exacerbate the existing flooding conditions for residents and properties?
Again, that would have to be a regional study, it's, uh, it's, I think this was discussed at the environmental commission, the timing of discharges is part of it.
Okay. Let's move on, sir. I want to talk about some of the variances and waivers that are being sought here. So under code section 188, 106, A2, the I-3 zoning district, it says extreme importance will be considerations of the effects of one building upon another and on a budding residential zone, are you familiar with that provision, sir?
I'm not familiar with that specific revision.
You have previously indicated that existing site conditions would not allow you to relocate the emergency spillway from its current location pointing directly at the neighboring residences. What specific site conditions are you referring to?
Elevations.
Can you expand?
You have to put the emergency spillway at the low end, and you can't have an emergency spillway, in this case, our high end of the basin is on the south end of the basin, and the elevations beyond that area of the basin are higher than the basin, so therefore the emergency spillway wouldn't function if it were in that location. And they, please, and the, the basin exists, as does the emergency spillway, and we're endeavoring to expand, enhance the emergency basin and raise the, and reconstruct the emergency spillway.
Okay, so is your testimony that it is not possible to relocate that emergency spillway?
I'm saying that we've located where it has to be based on grade.
Do you believe it is good engineering practice to direct this emergency spillway towards the adjacent residential properties, even in such a flood-prone area?
The emergency spillway really only would act in an emergency case. And certainly, if I had my choice to put it in another place, I would. And in this case, the areas I think you're referring to are downstream of this, so even if I moved the emergency spillway on the south end of this basin, ultimately, the water would go in the same place. So, and we haven't, sorry.
No, finish, I'm sorry.
No, I seem angry, so I'm going to let you go.
Okay, um, let's move on and talk about trees. I want to go through the specific tree waivers that you're seeking here. So initially, you're seeking to apply the economic hardship to reduce the tree replacement on the site from about 900 trees to about 452, is that correct?
That's in the ordinance, and we've adopted to apply that economic hardship waiver request, correct.
Okay, and then secondly, you're proposing to provide a financial offsite contribution to further reduce your tree replacement beyond 195 trees, arguing that you cannot provide replacement trees beyond this number, is that correct?
That's not correct. We're not trying to get out of that total number of trees. We're saying that we would plant as many trees as possible onsite, and if the board's engineer, and I think this was my testimony at the last hearing, found that there were other locations that were suitable for onsite trees, we would plant them. But to the extent they couldn't be fit onsite, we're not looking to not plant them anywhere, we're, we're willing to make a contribution to the town so that they could plant it, be planted anywhere in town.
So the ordinance says that you can make this financial offsite contribution if you cannot replant these trees onsite. Are you not saying that you cannot replant these trees onsite?
You know, uh, I guess it's, it's subjective as to whether in this space sitting in front of me, I could fit five trees or four trees. I'm not saying that we're, have an absolute, if the engineer feels that the four trees I put in the area, and I'm using this as a reference, between these tables can fit five trees, we're willing to put the five trees there.
Okay, let's go to the next part of the tree waiver that you're seeking. You're seeking a, a waiver to remove almost 8% more than the 60% limit, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, are you aware that the ordinance states that in no case shall more than up to 60% of the count of all trees in any non-residential lot be removed, even with mitigation measures?
That's why we need the relief.
So does that not apply here?
No, just like the, the building height is restricted, they're 35 feet, and we're asking for relief to exceed that, we're asking for relief to exceed the 60%. And as Mr. Ogrodnik stated, we've submitted a complying plan with less than 60% of the trees disturbed. We've been directed by various comments to endeavor to make the basin bigger. In fact, at the last board meeting, I think there was even a suggestion, when we came here and said we're at 68%, that if you could make the basin even bigger to the south, we'd like you to look at that. We'd be glad to do that and work with your engineer to do that, but that would result in more tree removal. And as I stated, too, this additional 8% is not to make way for anything but the regrading for the basin to make it bigger, and then those areas would be revegetated, that is, trees would be planted in those areas where the woods would come down. So effectively, the wooded area that's being disturbed is going to be restored.
I appreciate that. The ordinance does say in no case shall this occur, even with mitigation measures. So why is this project special?
I think that's a board decision. And then if they want the basin bigger, then we would need that relief.
Why is any additional, uh- Scratch that. Is it your testimony that there will be no impact stemming from the granting of these tree waivers on stormwater infiltration, recharge, and downstream flooding from additional volume runoff from this site?
That was a big sentence.
I, it was. Do trees provide any benefit for stormwater runoff?
Yes, uh, as our analysis shows, and actually, part of my testimony was that, uh, the fact that the existing condition beyond our site has built up disturbed areas where the trees have been removed, we've done the analysis in a conservative manner, as if the trees were still there. So yes, you know, land cover is part of stormwater management analysis, and wooded areas are considered to have less runoff than other types of land cover.
You, you are seeking waivers to remove these additional trees, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so is it your testimony that those waivers will not have any detrimental impact on the stormwater runoff from this site?
We've, are replanting those areas with the additional, where the 8% is being removed, we're putting back the trees, so ultimately, the wooded cover will still be there. And we've done the analysis with the land cover as proposed.
You're only replanting about 90 or so trees on this site, is that correct?
Uh, no, our initial application, and I said this at the last hearing as well, was, I believe it was 94, 93 trees with our initial application for replacement trees, and since that, we've done many iterations, and this is unlike a lot of other applications, where we appear before the board and wait and make all the changes once all the action and review has been taken place. In this case, we've been proactive and tried to respond to each and every review we've gotten as quickly as possible. So we've made several revisions, one of them including a substantial increase in the number of trees to about 100, I believe it's 190 trees now in the plan. And as I stated moments ago, if the board's engineer finds a location where he feels it's suitable to us, pled to provide more trees onsite, will do so.
Okay, let's move on. And you, you've stated in response to comments from the board and the board engineer from other parties that you, one of the things you've done is expanded the basin, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. On your wetland permit plan, you propose for a general permit one for necessary work on the basin, is that correct?
We prepared the wetland permit plan, and the wetland permit to the EP has been submitted, it's pending, and that's being administered, that permit is being administered by the applicant's environmental consultant, Ed Cook, Eastern States Environmental. That's correct.
Okay, so are you aware that under NJAC 7 semicolon 7A dash 71A2, one of the provisions for your GP1 is that the activities cannot expand, widen, or deepen the previously authorized feature?
Not the wetland permit consultant for this plan, or this project, so I can't answer your question. I'm not a wetland permit expert.
Okay. If, uh, if it were true that the GP1 could not be got for this development and individual permit were needed, wouldn't that significantly alter your design?
Not that I'm aware of, and I think we've said this on the record multiple times already, all the outside agency approvals, including the DEP permits, will be secured as would be required. So if that's an individual permit, sir, and the individual permit was required, we would secure that.
In your experience, the individual permit generally requires much more mitigation than a general permit, is that correct?
Again, I'm not the wetland professional for this project, so let's-
Have you had a chance, sir, to review the township's 1988 resolution and memorandum that's been discussed?
The, the prior resolution approval for the project, yes, yes.
All right, so that resolution required as a condition of approval that that applicant complete an engineering study developing remedial solutions to alleviate the existing and potential flooding problems as detailed in the February 1988 downstream impact study. Yet this applicant hasn't endeavored to conduct any such study or to develop any such remedial solutions, is that correct?
I think that the fact that we're expanding the basin well beyond what would be required for us to meet the regulations regarding the peak flow reductions is, is substantial.
Okay, I don't have any more questions.
This is new for me, too, so I'm not sure where we go next.
Well, are you introducing an expert?
Yes, I plan to, I have another question for Mr. Ford.
Okay.
Sorry, that wasn't clear.
Now, I know you didn't have any more, but I didn't know if you were gonna fall for anybody else at this point.
Jordan needs to talk closer to the mic.
Is it, is it better? Is it, you gotta do it like American Idol.
I move around a lot, when I speak next, I'll try to speak louder.
Unless you want to just hold the one that's on the table there, for our engine, from our engineer, that we don't need at the most.
Hey, Mike. Is it a good time for a break?
Is this, is this any better?
Yeah, but I think that's better.
Move to the front.
Mr. Chairman, before you get, if we finish, Mr., I don't think Mr. Ford was available to the public.
Right, say-
So when we come back-
When we come back, okay.
Yeah, we want Mr. Ford to stay.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Ash may be finished with Mr. Ford, but others may not be.
Right, right. So-
Gracious.
How much time you need, Mike? Five, 10? 10, we're gonna give him 10. Yeah, so use your cell phones, because this clock is inaccurate. I've got nine o'clock, so we'll reconvene at 9:10. so we'll reconvene at 9:10. And Mr. Bernstein, do I need to open?
Motion to open public.
Okay.
So a second.
Favor?
Before we go to public, though, I do have questions for Mr. Ford.
Okay, you could start.
Okay. I've just been to the snores. Sorry. Okay, so what I wanted to do is council did go over a few of the topics that were, that were drafted in the environmental commission letter. We went, we had an initial meeting. Then the environmental commission asked for an additional meeting, which was last Monday, the 28th, I believe. And they generated a report. Council came up with some of the issues, but I'd like to go over a few of them that I did not hear him address that the environmental commission brought up. So... Okay, so one of the issues was the classification of the soils. And we had a witness there from Whitestone Associates. And there was a discussion about the difference of soils between the Cs and the Ds. And it was, we went over, heard the Kyle Kopas from Whitestone, how they went about classifying the soils, and the fact that they determined that it is a D soil, correct, Mr. Ford? So based on that, I'm just gonna read verbatim here. It's the commission, the commission asks or commented that the reclassification of soil from D to C was approved or commented by the soil union, by the conservation district. The commission recommends that the township contact the soil conservation district to determine whether the approve of changing the soil groups for this project from C to D. The groundwater is in Chapter 6 of Groundwater Recharge of the Best Management Practice Manual states that the assignment of the HSGD to any development site should be discussed with the local soil conservation district prior to proceeding to help ensure that the site soil is accurate. So just resubmitting the application, we feel is not good enough. We'd like a discussion with them to make sure that they understand that the soils, you know, are classified from C to D. So again, the conservation district does not specific, that does not mean specifically they evaluated the reclassification of the soil type. So we want to make sure that is done. Council talked about that general permit one. We also discussed that at the environmental commission and agreed that the general permit for the repair maintenance of the existing stormwater basin, it does not apply when the existing basin design is being changed. So that should be an NJDEP decision. If they require a fresh land water, a freshwater wetland individual permit, that'll be at the discretion of the DEP. And you might have to resubmit the application. That was discussed as well. Another issue was about best management practice manual is a four bay, which is required for the basin. However, the applicant's grading drainage and utility plan does not include a four bay. If a four bay is not included, the basin would not be designed in accordance with NJDEP best management practice manual, and township would be in violation of town's MS4 permit. As such, a four bay is required to be shown on the design plans for the proposed basin extension.
Okay. The first two points, the discussion, further discussion with the soil conservation district where it says should, not shall, but the applicant doesn't object to that requirement with regards to the DEP permitting, the applicant will, as I already said, they'll comply with the requirements of DEP and what permit they require. And we have an active ongoing permit application with them. And then the last comment with regards to the four bay, the NJDEP BMP manual shows an exhibit, you know, an illustration of what a constructed wet pond looks like, and includes, you know, showing on that a four bay. And that may have been misconstrued by whoever stated that, that a four bay is absolutely required. But if you indulge me, I can read from, from section four point, I'm sorry, 10.4 of the BMP manual under pre-treatment on page four. One of the bullet points, I'm sorry, it's not numbered, but under pre-treatment, bullet point three, it states, "Pre-treatment may consist of a four bay or any of the BMPs found in chapters nine and 11." And in this case, we've provided BMP in advance of the basin in accordance with nine and/or 11. So that's the intent.
Okay.
So the, and again, we have the application pending at DEP. They've actually, as part of review comments, they provided resulted in the changes to the basin that's been classified as wetlands, mapped as wetlands, to be reconstructed and enhanced to be a constructed wetland pond in accordance with the new standards adopted in March of last year to qualify for green infrastructure. And we did that. That's what's shown on the plan now.
Mike, that's different than the, the Infulterra, that was, used to be the Bay Saver. I mean, that's a different mechanism. One's for TSS, and this other one is a different mechanism, correct?
Pre-treatment is for water quality.
Right.
Prior to discharge to the basin. And the chapters nine and 10 deal with those mechanical treatment devices like the Infulterra. And I'm not going to dispute any of what you said is in the sense that if your engineer doesn't feel that the BMPs we've placed in advance of the basin qualify as BMPs found in chapter nine and 10, and thus don't require a four bay. And that's also subject to DEP's review and approval. And in this case, too, the four bay is basically a small impoundment area right at the discharge. It doesn't, it would be reconfiguring the inside of the basin.
Drew, you tracking with that, or?
Yes. So basically, the measures that the four bay would handle are being handled here by the other BMPs that are being proposed on the site for water quality. And they're treating the stormwater prior to it reaching the basin as the four bay would, because it's situated, it would be situated where an inland pipe is to the basin, it would have a four bay, and then it would overflow into the main basin. So I agree with Mr. Ford in his assessment of the, of the way it's designed, really precludes the need for the four bay, because those measures have been done ahead of time in the rest of the areas of the site.
Okay. We talked about the water budget with the wet year, dry year, and average year. Council brought that up. The 60% thresholds with the impervious, I mean, the perfect scenario would be reduce the size of the footprint of the warehouse, keep the size of the basin, and keep the trees. That would be the pie in the sky scenario. Another issue, commission wanted to know if the applicant, if it's possible to reduce the building parking footprint to meet the tree ordinance threshold of 60%, while also providing the proposed basin extension to help alleviate the flooding, especially as the tenant is not yet known. May there, there may be flexibility in the dimension and size in the proposed warehouse. Another item that was discussed is about the tree Another item that was discussed is about the tree clearing. Should adhere to tree clearing trimming restrictions regarding migratory birds, no tree clearing between April 1st and August 31st of the year to protect, and a protected bat species. That's in accordance with Fish and Wildlife standards. I know at our meeting, Ms. Gulliford might say, might come up and say this anyway, but she had brought up that she was concerned about what's actually going to be in the warehouse, if there was any oils or greases. In the case there was flooding, that you consider possibly an oil-water separator or device that would mitigate any pollutants, should, you know, should they be incorporated into the design where possible? That was brought up by her at the meeting. There was some other neighbors that had some other comments that are probably here tonight that are going to bring it up as well. But I don't know if you have any reply to any of that and I'll stop there.
Yeah, the, the part of our testimony has already been that we submitted the complying application with regards to the 60%. So the applicant is not, is asking for the 8% waiver to make the basin larger to enhance the stormwater management. With regards to the water quality and it's my understanding that the Environmental Commission discussion acknowledged that the runoff from these paved areas is being treated by the mechanical treatment devices. And, and it should be noted that by virtue of the wet pond having a permanent pool, that's another water quality measure that there's no, you know, other than making the basin qualify as green infrastructure, there's no water quality analysis credit being taken for the constructed wet pond, but you know, wetland pond, water quality measures that are there as well. So there was no, there's been no discussion with the applicant for additional measures. All the runoff, I think part of it is, there was maybe a perception that this is similar to other warehouse areas where the truck loading docks slope back toward the building and therefore, you know, are, have stormwater collected in a trench against the building. That's not the case here. So there's not an opportunity where there's like a trench drain that we could add some oil-water separator to. All the runoff is flowing away from the building toward those mechanical treatment devices. Is there another?
I know it was brought up, so I just wanted to address it.
Oh, and I'm sorry, the, your comment about the tree mitigation removal. We expected that limitation on when you can disturb the trees would be, you know, part of a condition of the DEP permit and we agree to comply to that. Yeah. Certainly.
Breaks off. Anyone else from the dais? Okay. So we are open to the public to, if anyone in the public would like to question Mr. Ford on his testimony, please feel to come up. And again, just a reminder, state your name and address for the record.
John Tungin, 150 Johansson Ave. Mr. Ford, we've seen you several times. Every time you've tested, your testimonial has always said, every time you've built behind our homes, and I've been living there 25, 30 years, it's not going to get worse. You're not making the situation worse. It's either going to make, it's going to make it the same or better. It's gotten worse every year. You're an engineer, you evaluated this land dozens of times. Has anyone ever gone back there during a major storm to see how that water's flowing?
I've been to the area a number of times, you know, even right after Ida, you know.
After Ida?
Yeah, to try to get there and the area was blocked off, actually.
So yes or no? My question is this. We have numerous times have told you, we've been out there with our raincoats on, standing there, watching this water flow. And has anyone, anyone here ever thought about, hmm, let's go back there during a major rainstorm so we can actually see how this water's flowing? Because I could tell you how it's flowing. Because we're, every time it rains really hard, we think our houses are going to go in the water. In Village Green, all that water comes rushing down. It, no one has maintained that ditch or any of that catch basin. It flows right through that. That is doing nothing now. And then you talk about downstream. You keep saying downstream. Downstream is my backyard. It goes nowhere. I've come in front of this committee over and over. Now we have an engineer doing a study. If we need to fix the problem before we build anymore, we have a major problem. The water is not flowing to the Raritan River. We keep telling you that. And we, and we just keep getting in front of this committee and you keep approving more and more. And it gives us another foot and another foot and another foot of water. Last, this last storm, I had three feet coming through my house. Never had water before like that. Now I have to hear this. You've given us no choice but to be, once again, our, the whole back end of Johansson or complex will be in the water. That's what's going to happen. I know it's going to happen. We have to fix this before we let more building go on. And the fix is, we've got to get the water to go flow downstream like you keep saying because you're not flowing it towards 206. You're saying, we have to go by the natural flow of water. Well, the natural flow of water over the years isn't working anymore. I can't make that any clearer. I stand in my backyard on this last major storm, I watched my kayak flow from back of my house, go two doors down and flow right back. That's not downstream. It's just not down, there's no stream. It's got to get fixed. And you keep talking about these numbers and no one's going back there during a major rainstorm. It blows my mind. Last time you testified, you told us we didn't, you didn't know if it was a C1 waterway. You said it was a ditch. It was a C1 waterway. I mean, this land is so temperamental, you should know with like the back of your hand by now. And I still, it still amazes me with all this testimony, why no one can go back there when we have a major rainstorm. Because it would be, it would be eye opening. It really would. It's just, this is a shame what you're doing.
I know that the passions are there, but remember, this is not time for speeches or it's questions on testimony. Mr. Tungin, all due respect, that will come later. So in an effort to keep the process moving along, let's just have questions for the testimony and then we can have comments again like we always do at the very end.
Green Colmer, 144 Taylor Avenue. Mr. Ford, at the last testimony, there was, you mentioned a new outlet structure. You're going to have to explain some things for me, so I apologize, I'm not an engineer. What is it? Where does it go?
It's within the detention basin and it's, the outlet structure is referring to the device that controls the discharge from the basin.
Is that the one, how is it, how is it controlled?
It is a structure with a series of either wiers or orifices that are part of the analysis that allow water to run out at different rates.
Right. I'm going to assume that you're correct on that one. Is there any been consideration noise suppression or do you anticipate any increased noise just from the truck, the truck traffic that is into there and/or the mitigation that would help with that?
I'm not a noise expert, sir, and I didn't testify regarding any noise.
Some trees may be able to suppress that noise. Do you have any priority areas for tree mitigations for, you know, where are you going to plant the trees, just for our neighborhood, the Green Hills neighborhood, my neighborhood?
There, there are trees being planted.
Are there priority areas?
The area, I'm not sure what your neighborhood would.
It's the Green Hills neighborhood.
Okay, all right. Where the basin is at. So there are trees being planted around the edge of the basin.
How many?
Throughout the site, I said earlier this evening about 190 trees and we'd worked with the boards, you know, engineer to supplement those plantings that he felt there was room for other trees in other areas.
Okay. So no priority areas that would be leading to any noise suppression, is what I'm hearing. I don't know if this is a question for you, Mr. Ford.
I'm not certain that the trees are good for noise mitigation.
Wonderful. What would be?
Sound walls.
Okay. Is there any?
Like along the high wall? No, there isn't.
Okay. What are the maintenance respons, this may not be for you, Mr. Ford, I don't know if it's for the larger board. What would be the maintenance responsibilities for that basin in terms of annual? Is it under the?
Yeah, there's a operation and maintenance manual that's prepared for the basin and that manual is recorded at the county clerk's office. So it's a discoverable document that goes with the title of the land to identify any owner of the responsibilities of the basin.
In your profession?
Can I please finish answering your question?
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
And then the township ordinance requires that these basins be inspected periodically and those reports are submitted to the engineering department regarding stormwater management facility maintenance.
Got it. It would be under the owner's responsibility to maintain the basin?
Yes.
From what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And how about the bits that are leaning down to the drain that's going to, how, where does the maintenance stop for the?
The?
Is it just the basin or is it the, the bay that goes into there? Where does the responsibility for that stop?
It would be on this property, would be the owner of this property's responsibility. And then if there's an easement on the property that has stormwater facilities that are installed or maintained by others, it'd be those responsibilities. So this would be laid out in the easement or whatever document was recorded as part of those improvements as well.
Okay. I know that you're in the area, you, you have seen there's water behind there. Are you anticipating all the water that's behind going downstream to enter this basin? And was that in part of your calculation?
I, I think to answer your question specifically is we've done a drainage analysis that delineates the drainage area that goes to the basin. That's part of our report.
That's from the left-hand side or south side? I don't have very detailed direction.
Yeah.
If I'm looking at that document, that's right in front of you, it's on the right-hand side. So there's water all flowing through in here. Would that go into the basin?
No.
Okay. That's not part of the, your sort of water analysis of how much water would be included into there?
Again, we did a drainage analysis that includes a drainage report and the drainage report is a drainage area map.
Okay.
That shows what area it goes into the basin.
What's the anticipated depth of the water in the basin?
It varies.
From?
Well, the permanent pool of water is four feet deep.
To maximum?
That's at about four or five feet above that.
Do you know how far that water is from the edge of the neighborhood, from Green Hills neighborhood?
This illustration right here shows it's all on our property.
I understand that. Do you know, just up under your head, is that where that distance is?
No, I don't.
Ballpark it? 100 feet?
I think it's over 100 feet to the residences.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Susan Gulliford, Con Club Road. Since Mr. Julian referred to the memo of the 28th, which I think I saw this afternoon, I don't have it in front of me. Would you be addressing anything that's in that memo or only parts of it?
Actually, I think we've touched on all the elements in it and that's what Mr. Julian followed up with and went through.
Okay. Because I was wondering, one of the things I had mentioned at that meeting, restrictions on what's stored in the warehouse, but that would be involving, unless there was flooding, accidental fire where it would wash into, but I'm not sure that into the basins, but I'm not sure if that's something that's, something you would cover or not.
As the site engineer, I'm not dealing with the occupants.
And the runoff from the trucks and the warehouse contents, the mitigation, that's what you would just cover, all that? And that would be from the trucks and the warehouse contents?
Well, no, the, the inside of the building is not, we're dealing with roof runoff from the outside.
Okay. Thank you.
Turn this off. Anyone else from the public that would like to question Mr. Ford on his testimony?
Maria Janus, 6720 East Freck Avenue. How many trees total are going to be cut down?
The total remain was approximately 100, 420 trees.
That's total 420?
Correct.
Okay. Because there's a memo. A letter here dated November 1, 2021 to David Vaskey Planning Director. I think that's from you. And it says here that there was a typo and it was showing that 372 trees were to be removed for construction of the development, reflecting 59.9% of the total trees. And then the new calculation reflects 61.35% or 381 trees. And how many did you say total?
It's 421.
421?
You're referring to the November 1st, 2021 submittal we made in response to memos we received last fall. Since then, there's been other revisions to the plan, including the expansion of the basin as recently as, as January that resulted in greater tree loss.
And where is that, where is that, where is that information?
Was submitted to the board on January 28th, I believe.
This year, January 28th?
Yes.
Okay. Is that part of the records that were provided for this meeting?
Yes, it's online.
Yeah.
All documents are in the city clerk website.
The stormwater basin that you're referring to, the, the original one, when was that, when was that constructed or built or whatever?
It's my understanding the late 80s.
So why is that, why is that even considered a stormwater basin at this point? Because was that maintained every year since, since the late 80s?
No, it's my understanding that's one of the concerns about the property, that that basin hasn't been well maintained. And part of this application will be to enhance it, make it bigger, and then put in place mechanisms to ensure the, the maintenance moving forward, both by virtue of the applicant and the owner and the reporting now required to the township.
Okay. But if that was built in the, what, late 80s? So we're talking how many years? 30 something years? How is that even considered anymore to be a stormwater basin? Isn't there, isn't there at some point a cutoff if, if a project wasn't, wasn't finished and it's just allowed to go back to nature? How, how are you calling that a basin? Shouldn't there be something totally new?
No, the, the basin that's there actually serves a purpose with or without this development. The existing improvements that were built in the 80s and that included the warehouse that's there now, as well as Harvard Lane and Campus Drive. That drainage from those areas goes into this existing basin.
But that wasn't maintained?
That's correct. Yeah. It's not been maintained properly.
Okay. Well, then whose responsibility is it to see that it's maintained? Because is that creating problems with the stormwater?
This applicant didn't own property during the time that it fell into disrepair.
Okay. Well, is that something that should be talked about though? I mean, if this was in disrepair and there were issues with all that stuff, I, I don't understand this. 30 something years, it's not being maintained. Now we're calling this a stormwater basin? It should be a whole new, whole new thing that's done properly for this project.
And it is. That was the testimony.
Well, if it is, then why is this even being talked about, this prior basin? Well, if it is, then why is this even being talked about, this prior basin?
It's the location.
It, it still exists, yes, yeah.
It exists, but not as a basin, is it, because it wasn't maintained as a basin? And then in that case, whose responsibility in the township is it to see that these kinds of basins are maintained? Because we're talking about stormwater, which is a big issue.
Mr. Ford, can you just exp-- are, are you making any improvements to the basin? Or is it you keeping it in the existing state?
No, we're improving it substantially with the expansion, revegetation, converting it to wetland, constructed wetland pond, adding an outlet structure, um, changing the, and, and raising the spillway. Yeah. And then moving forward, like as, as I said, the owner's uh, operation manual will be recorded. So for example, right now, if you did a title search on the property, you'd get a deed, but it's my knowledge, there's no recorded uh, document that dictates the responsibility of the maintenance of that basin. One of the corrective actions that'll happen as a result of this application is such a document will be recorded.
Such a document will be recorded that, that what? That there's a stormwater basin and--
That's correct.
And that the owner will be responsible for--
And it lays out the responsibility of it. That's correct.
Okay, uh, this, going back to that 1988 or whatever um, project. There's a letter here from um, the County of Somerset Planning Board to uh, Carl Sarachi Chairman, uh, Chairman of the Hillsborough Township Planning Board. And in regard to the stormwater management, uh, it says--
Please, for the record, date of that letter?
The letter is dated June 4, 2021.
Thank you.
And it's in regard to Harvard Way JMJ 4 LLC, Block 58, Lot 1.09 HB 646:000-21S. And then there's a, a, a heading, "Stormwater Management." "The plan shows runoff from the proposed impervious surfaces to be conveyed to a detention basin that was construction as part of Phase 1, in parentheses, 'Development of Lot 1.08 via a network of storm sewers.'" So what does Lot 1.08, what's the connection between that lot and, and, and 1.09?
It's adjoining lot. That, that's the warehouse that I referred to earlier that exists, that fronts on Harvard Way and Campus Drive.
So when that warehouse was built, the stormwater basin was for that, for that warehouse?
And the future development of this property, yes.
Does that say that in the project, in future development of Lot 1.09?
Yes.
It does?
Yes.
Where, and where is that, where does that state it?
Uh, there were reports from the prior design.
But why, why is that a project from 30, almost 40 years ago? What does that have to do with this? I mean, I mean, I had made comments about a, a project um, there's, on the Sherman property in regard, in regard to uh, something that was gonna be there and I was chastised for bringing up something from way, way back. We're talking 30-something years ago. There should be a brand-new basin for this project. Uh, uh, this is very bizarre to bring, to bring up history from 30-something years ago. That, that was entirely different um, how that, how that area looked. There wasn't that kind of development like there is now. So there's gotta be, you gotta do something brand-new, not, not talk about that there's an existing basin. That, that's, that, that, this, I don't know, this doesn't, doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Additional questions of this witness? Okay. There are no more. Counselor, I--
Is he done?
For now. Huh?
You're done with your witness?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, alright. So just as a reminder, we are before 10 o'clock, so we, I guess we are taking testimony, but we are stopping, a hard stop at 10:30. We are not extending tonight.
We will try to be as efficient as possible. We would, like I said, like to finish up our testimony as much as you guys would like us to finish up our testimony tonight.
Thank you.
So again, for the record, my name is Jordan Ash. I'm attorney at Ash Legal. I represent the Green Hills community. The individual sitting next to me is Clay Emerson. And I would like to swear a manhood as a witness, please.
Your testimony you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth, the truth. I did. For the record, could you say your name? Uh, certainly. Clay Emerson, C-L-A-Y-E-M-E-R-S-O-N. Next.
Clay, can you give us um, a little bit about yourself and your background, your education, professional certifications, please?
Sure, sure. A bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Rowan University, a master's degree from Drexel University, and a PhD from Villanova University with a focus in, all those degrees are focused in environmental civil engineering, specifically water resources. All of my research throughout my academic career at least was focused on stormwater management and, and soils to a lesser extent. I think my mom was on to something when she named me Clay. I've heard that joke a million times before, so I'm gonna beat everyone to it. And uh, as far as other qualifications, uh, I've been a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'm also certified floodplain manager.
Okay.
And uh, I'm also an adjunct professor at Rowan University, Villanova University, from time to time when, when it allows.
And have you appeared before this board before as an expert witness?
No, not this board.
Other boards in the state?
Certainly.
Courts of law in the state?
Yes, and others.
Okay, were you at all involved in the uh, oh, I'll get to that one. I'd like to propose Clay as an expert witness. Uh, expert engineer specifically in the field of stormwater management, hydrology, and general hydrologics. Ford will allow it?
Okay, just, just two quick questions. Any uh, gaps or suspensions in, in, in any of your licenses or certifications?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, and, and just how many years of professional experience?
14?
14.
Fif-- fifteen, something like that.
Okay. Any objections? I see a bunch of heads shaking no, so we will accept. Proceed, please.
Uh, Mr. Emerson, were you involved at all in the uh, amendments to the stormwater management rules in the state?
Yes, uh, very, very involved in the stakeholder process, going back probably four years or, or more.
Okay. Uh, did you have a chance to review the applications before the board tonight?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and how specifically did you familiarize yourself with the application?
Uh, very, very detailed thorough review, in my opinion.
Did you review the, the documents that were submitted by the applicant?
I did. Uh, they, they include the, the main points that we'll discuss are items that are included in the plan set itself and the supporting stormwater management report or drainage report, which was most recently revised in January.
Okay, did you hear the testimony from the applicant, the applicant's professionals tonight and at the prior hearings?
I did. I was present for all the prior hearings, in fact.
Okay, did you prepare a report providing an opinion um, as to the stormwater management on this project?
Yes, I, I prepared an, uh, an exhibit.
I'm gonna object to any documents being presented that were not previously submitted to this board in anticipation of the hearing.
Uh, there's no grounds for that. These are not being submitted for approval by the board and this is how the process works with an objector.
Well, here's the problem, Mr. Ash, and, and, and you know, and, and part of the problem is one has to be careful of hoisting one up on one's own petard. Um, when there were issues about prior reports being presented to this board, you raised the issue about timeliness. I think it's disingenuous to the board unless Dr. Donovan is gonna tell us that he just wrote the report today and hasn't had a chance to distribute it. For, forget Mr. O'Grady for the sake of this discussion with all due respect to Mr. O'Grady. The board hasn't seen any report. You're gonna ask the witness to opine on a report that the ultimate determiner hasn't seen. Minimally, it would have made sense to provide a copy of same, not only to your adversary, but more importantly to the ultimate determiner, which is the members of the board, Mr. DeSessa, Mr. Maskey, and myself, to be prepared to deal with the testimony at hand. So if your client is intending to testify as to report, it really begs the question of what, of what's the only two people who have apparently seen the report are you and him? So what do you expect the board to get out of this? When they haven't had a chance to review it for purposes of asking questions, following along, or being able to ask questions during the testimony?
Mr. Bernstein, the report will be presented as an exhibit, as is allowed in this municipal land use process on municipal land use law. You know, the, the, the applicant uh, you know, has their 10-day rule because those documents are submitted for approval to the board and that's what the rule states. You know, if, if the applicant had submit, had finished its uh, presentation to the board during the first hearing, which often happens, um, we would not have even had the opportunity to do that. So, you know, Mr. Emerson has had the uh, benefit of hearing all the testimony before the board in preparing his uh, report. It is not, again, not being submitted for approval to the board, it's being submitted as an exhibit to his testimony, which he will provide and will be cross-examined on.
Mr. Ash, you placed yourself and your client as a objector in this case. By placing yourself as an objector in this case, you become a party to this application to the extent that the board, you want the board to hear the claims made by you and your client, including any expert testimony. Granted, for the sake of this discussion, that there may not be a 10-day rule applicable, and I'm not totally sure that the municipal land use law exempts you from it. To have a witness who is obviously being called to testify as an expert, you just had him qualified as one, to provide expert testimony based on an expert report begs the question of why this board and your adversary and the board's professionals haven't seen this report that your client's about to testify to prior to his testimony?
Because that's not the process in the municipal land use law. The applicant provides their materials and there's a 10-day notice period.
Mr. Ash, this is not an issue of the applicant does X and everybody else gets to do what they wanna do. You're not a member of the public. You're not here as a member of the public. You are not here as a resident or as a concerned citizen. You're here as counsel on behalf of a recognized client who is, has objector standing. You don't get to pick and choose which part of the MLUL you like when it comes to providing documentation to this board.
Mr. Bernstein, respectfully, I was, previously, Mr. O'Grady communicated with the board and submitted documents that were submitted to me on the argument that I was not entitled to those documents, so I'm not the one who's trying to have it both ways here. I am following the process.
Well, your problem is, even if you're following the process for Mr. O'Grady and he can comment and so on, that's his issue. My issue is, my client here is now about to hear testimony from your witness, your qualified expert witness, that none of its qualified experts nor the board has had an opportunity to review. This is a quasi-judicial process. You don't get to go before a judge for, say, "Your Honor, I'm gonna produce a witness, but I'm not gonna let anybody know what the testimony is of the witness before he presents it." You know what the rules are.
Mr. Bernstein, respectfully, the way the, the process is set up is that if, initially where the 10 days goes, we've not even had the opportunity to present a report to the board.
Mr. Ash, the 10 days, the 10 days aren't the issue here. You have about, you are going to have a witness testify to a report that no one has seen. I'll let Mr. O'Grady deal with the issue of what his claims are on the applicant. For the board's purpose, you haven't submitted the report. It hasn't been placed up on the board's website for purposes of the public to see the testimony. The board hasn't had an opportunity to see it. The board's professionals haven't had an opportunity to see it. And you're telling me that you don't have to. Well, the issue is, yes, you do. You have to provide documentation in advance of these meetings to the board. Forget your adversary, the board.
Mr. Bernstein, but the rules you're referring to are for documents submitted for approval. This is not--
No, Mr. Mr. Ash, you are submitting the, you said, let me ask you a question. Dr. Donovan's about to testify to give--
Dr. Emerson.
Dexter, sorry. Dr. Emerson's about to give an, a expert opinion. I'm assuming you don't want the board to hear it. The board is going to go and look up at the ceiling and pretend like it wasn't there because you're really not putting this before the board for any real consequence. You're just doing this because we have nothing else to do at 10 o'clock at night on a Thursday night. That you and I both know, that's not the case. You're producing this witness for purposes of rebutting the applicant's application, for the purpose of the board to consider whether or not it's going to consider his opinion and it relates to its decision. So, let's get beyond the issue of whether it's 10 days, five, whatever the date is, you're supposed to provide the material to the board in advance of the hearing, including under the rules of the Department of Community Affairs. So, where's the report?
Mr. Bernstein, I would like to submit the report as an exhibit to be presented along with Mr. Emerson's testimony.
We object to the submission. It's prejudicial.
Mr. Ash, so your, your witness has been at several of these meetings. Was this report ready at any of these meetings? Because you didn't know when you were gonna show up, right?
This report had been prepared three different times because the applicant had been continually amending this application.
So theoretically, you could have submitted it long ago with amended afterwards if there had been changes. So you chose not to submit it at any time?
Well, if I was--
If it was ready, if, if your, if your testimony is that you want to rebuttal and you want to put before the board and that, and he was here for three meetings, so that, obviously that report was ready for you to sit here and expand, expound on it. It could have been submitted and amended as you needed to along the way, but you chose not to submit it.
That's putting an unfair burden on my client. That's, that's--
Just saying, this wasn't done like two minutes ago and you're just now showing up with it. It's been in your pocket the entire time.
Also, Mr. Ash, is there a way to uh, provide expert testimony without a report?
Is it possible? Of course, there is. Mr. Donnie, who I believe was their planner, did, did, did that very thing. I think that the report as an exhibit is an aid to the testimony. I'm entitled to show it and frankly, if I'm not allowed, that's a very appealable--
No, we're not suggesting, Mr. Ash, you're not allowed to show it. The issue is, the board has the right to see it prior to the testimony, like every other expert report that's provided to this board as part of an application, whether it's by you, by Mr. O'Grady, or any other expert, or any other party with standing. The people who don't have to do that are members of the public who don't have standing per se. But you place yourself and your client in the standing position when you came before this board at the beginning of the application and sought objector status, which you were granted. This board isn't gonna deny you the opportunity. The board wants to see, however, the report before there's testimony. And the board's gonna want Mr. DeSessa and Mr. Maskey to review it in case they have questions about it and want information prior to. No different, by the way, than any other expert report that's ever produced before this board.
Sir, again, respectfully, the difference is those other reports are submitted for approval, which is how the rule is stated. And this one is not submitted for approval. It's submitted as an exhibit, as an aid to Mr. Emerson, Dr. Emerson's testimony.
Which section are you citing to counsel?
I don't know the section off the top of my head.
Well, then, in the absence of a specific cite to the municipal land use law, if you would please advise me where in a judicial, in a quasi-judicial proceeding, you get to pick when you submit the expert report or not, I'll be happy to look at those and give my client advice accordingly as to how to address the report issue. But why don't we just, and the mayor raises the additional question. If your clients had the report prior, why doesn't this board have the report? Why doesn't the public have the report? It's a public document. It's going to be a public document. Putting it before the board after the testimony is putting the cart after the horse.
I'm, I'm gonna put it on during the testimony. Um, and I still believe that I am entitled to present this as an exhibit because it's not being submitted for approval and that's how the MLUL is set up, though I don't have the site off the top of my head.
Mr. Mr. Ash, none of Mr. O'Grady's reports are submitted to the board for approval. They are submitted in support of his application. Just like your expert report is being submitted in support of your claim in opposition to the application. So let's stop parsing words here. The report is no different than any other expert report. If the board wants to let your client testify without the report, that's fine, but that's a board determination and I'm not recommending it.
So are, are you suggesting that I will not be allowed to present the, Mr. Dr. Emerson's report as an exhibit, as an aid to his testimony?
No, I am suggesting that you submit Dr. Emerson's report-- No, I am suggesting that you submit Dr. Emerson's report prior to Dr. Emerson's testimony at another meeting, which at the point, everybody gets a chance to look at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to step in at this point because what I don't want is a, I'm going to try to keep this G-rated and saying, I don't want a P-match going on right here because someone's going to appeal it at the end of the day. So I think in fairness to everyone, I think we're going to, and this evening, we're going to reschedule. You will submit the report to this board, to our professionals for review prior to reconvening at a future date, and also to the applicant's attorney, too, for their review. I want everything to be completely transparent. I don't want anyone, you know, playing tactical maneuvers or anything that's going to lead to an appeal from one side or the other. I thought I had kind of made that clear a couple of meetings ago. So at this point, are we good for a future meeting?
If that's how the board would like to proceed, I've made my position clear as to my interpretation of the rule.
And I want full transparency in all these proceedings because I'm not going to, you know, waste everyone's time only for an appeal to go down in the future. That's just going to waste everyone's resources.
I don't want that either.
Let's be clear. We want to hear the testimony. We're not denying that, that testimony of your professional and your case, but we want to have it for its fair so the public has a chance to review it as well as our professionals because we may have a question for Mr. DeSessa, and that's not fair for him to have to listen to testimony and come up with an answer for us in the middle of a testimony. So it's
And the applicant will be happy to meet with the objectors, professionals, as well as the township professionals that we had previously offered to try to resolve any stormwater concerns in anticipation of the next year.
So is this, Mr. Maskey, when do we have an opening in our, in our schedule?
The next meeting is April 7th. We have a fairly small application we want to get on that, which I think we could fit, but April 7th would be the next.
That assumes, is it not, Mr. Maskey, that the applicant will extend the time for decision? Which is March 31st?
Correct. It's March 31st is the current time of decision, so we would need an extension.
That's fine, but I'm away on April 7th. Is there another date? Is it next April?
It'd be more likely May. Maybe we don't have anybody official, we, we have some tentative applications slotted in for April 14th, which would take all night.
But, but they're tentative?
Yeah, at the moment, yes. And they're complete, they have to go to the EC on March 28th. So we wanted to line them up for April 14th, but that's up to the board.
Could those be moved up to the May thing and go completely to the, to the April?
They wouldn't be, one is a very large application, the April 14th one.
Okay.
It's another warehouse. Would be pushing it to go from the Environmental Commission meeting on March 28th to the Planning Board on April 7th. There's not much time in between there.
Can I ask, was your intention to allow the board to see it at some point so we could review it? I mean, or were you just going to submit it as a, as an exhibit? I'd just like to understand what your, what the ultimate plan was.
My intention was to follow the rules as I understand them, as I've done so when I've appeared before other boards, is to present it as an exhibit to my witness's testimony, and the board would see it then, the testimony would be very, you know, descriptive and wouldn't be hiding anything there, and be subject to cross-examination.
Are you, when you say exhibit, I mean, exhibits are generally a page or two, a sheet. Is this report 50 pages, 10 pages, two pages?
It's more along the lines of 10 pages, in that range.
So, David, do we have, I mean, I know we have a business meeting on March 24th?
Correct.
Or is there anything on, we usually have
Not at the moment. It's, there's nothing on it right now.
Okay. March 24th work for you?
I can't make it to 24th.
Any of the members can't make the 24th?
Everyone check their Google calendars.
I expect I should be releasable by then, hopefully.
24th?
24th.
So if we just have a date for the submission of the report?
Well, I think the answer to the first question, but let's see what the date of the, the meeting, I know
My witness is not available on 24th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We're trying with the date, we really are.
What's the challenge of moving the, the app, the pending applicants on 14th to the 7th? I mean, I know there's a turnaround because of the EC meeting, but I mean, how will it involve?
We could try it. It's probably going to be more than one night, anyway.
For the
The, the one we're talking about.
All right.
The new one.
How's the
April 14th.
How's the 14th work?
Oh, April.
April. I'm just trying to find a way to avoid going into May if we can.
April 14th is, is okay for us.
Mr. O'Grognick, okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Am I going to give an extension on the
Yes.
Thank you.
To, to
To the end of April?
To May 31st? Thank you. Report due, Mr. Chairman, by the 24th of March.
That's two weeks from tonight.
If I could interject, since it's 10-day rule, can we make it 10 days before the hearing?
Is this report done or not?
I mean, it's, it's been done, but there's been testimony. That's why the rules are set up
So you're going to change it again?
I, I don't know. If it was granted tonight, we wouldn't have. I'm not trying to play games. These are how, this is how this process has worked in my experience.
April 1st.
April 1st.
For Friday.
So the report will be in my hands by, by no later than April 1st.
And it's, and that's a Friday, right?
Yes.
I want it in at noon so that there's a chance to distribute prior to the weekend.
Understood, though. For the record, I do have to just place my objection that this is not how the rules are set up and how the process is meant to work.
And it's supposed to be for April 14th, is that correct?
April 14th.
Without notice?
Does the neighborhood need a notice, or does everyone know that we're coming back on the 14th?
It is, your chairman, it's a motion to extend, to continue this meeting to May 14th, to April 14th at 7:30 PM, or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without notice. Applicant will provide an extension of the time of decision rule to May 31st, 2022, and the objector shall present his expert report to the planning director by noon on Friday, April 1st, 2022, and also provide copy of same to the applicant's counsel at the same time.
That's a motion.
Okay, the mayor has moved that.
Second.
Okay. Do we have to do a roll call for that? Okay, roll call.
Vezin?
Yes.
Santa Armina?
Yes.
Mr. Hestag?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Maimon Delphor?
Yes.
Jerry Leponti?
Yes.
Mike Schergulian?
Yes.
Jared Roddick?
Yes.
See, on April 14th.
What was that?
April 14th.
April 14th. So we do not have anything on the agenda for the 24th then?
Correct.
So do we want to, a motion to cancel the meeting on the 24th?
Yeah, so moved.
Second. On favor? Aye. So the 24th is canceled. So then our next meeting will be April 7th?
April 7th, yes.
Okay, so with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.